I call to order Nelson County Board of Education Tuesday, the fifteenth of January. First of all, Superintendent Bradley, do we have any changes to the agenda?
We do not.
Let us all stand and say our prayers. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Nelson County Board mission statement is, "The Nelson County Board of Education, representatives of our citizens and entrusted with their children, pledges to support the mission of the Nelson County School District by setting visionary direction through effective policy, oversight, and efficient resource management." Our statement is, "Quality education now, learning for life." The next is, our third thing on the agenda is, "Energize the World." Person up will be our superintendent.
All right, so as many of you already know, because you've been involved in some of the process, January is Board of Appreciation Month, and this month for the Superintendent Board, we want to celebrate the Board of Education that we have. I can tell you that over the past seven months, Rebecca, I've grown to really appreciate the diversity of our team and the strengths, but most importantly, what I have grown to appreciate is that they care about Nelson County, and they care about our community, they care about our students. And when we're making decisions and they're asking me questions, it is about students. And this conversation we're having as a community of educators is really embodied in our board, and that is what brings me a lot of joy in this conversation. As we think about our three conversations we've been having as a district around Nelson County Pride, Inspired Leading and Learning, and Shared Leadership, I think, too, you guys have done such a nice job of embodying that and modeling that. From being a part of the Pride Games, really being invested in that conversation around bringing schools together. There's Buddy.
Damon.
From really thinking about the reorganization in May, as we started to think about community health, the first board that made sure that we had a school safety resource officer that was funded by the Nelson County School District, and that invested in community health and engagement in a way that's never been invested in before. Because you believe that every kid in this district deserves to be cared for, and you believe that every kid in this district deserves a safe school where they can thrive. Thinking about Inspired Leading and Learning, what the Pride Teams don't necessarily know, those of you who were here earlier, is the Board has been reading Deep Learning over the past three months. And your conversations in our last two work sessions have given our team here a lot of inspiration around the future of our school district. In the same way, you guys also might know that Board members have to get certain professional learning hours. And the Board members, not only do they seek the compliance-based number of hours, but they really are invested in thinking about how they can grow as a team and as individuals. They also invested in, the first board to invest in one-to-one Chromebooks for our district. So this is a picture I took last week at New Haven. This is a group of third graders, I was just behind them, and saw this is what it looked like in their class that day. And these kids here really feeling like they have the tools to collaborate and think anew right at the tips of their fingers. So you'll see kids in the video we're going to show shortly, all thank you for that as well. Additionally, the first board to invest in rethinking the way we allocate resources with workforce development. Our workforce development team is really a sign and a symbol of your commitment to not just the students of Nelson County, but our entire community. So I thank you for that, our students and principals, thank you for that, for allowing them to continue to grow, for allowing our schools to continue to grow. And I also thank you for being the first board to allow this space to exist. So this is the first board meeting we've had where we're sitting in what we consider a more community-centered approach. Now, we are on the same level literally as the community, which many of you expressed to me was important to you, that it is more of a community approach to the decision-making process. So thank you to our maintenance team, and thank you to the Board for allowing this conversation to occur, and thank you from our students across Nelson County Schools.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will build, we will be awesome because of you.
Thank you, Board of Education, for all you do.
Thank you for inviting me, being part of this impossible journey.
Thank you.
I love your energy.
Thank you for the behind, you for the resources.
Thank you for the opportunity to provide.
I appreciate your dedication.
Hi, we're the students from New Haven School, and we just want to say my, thank you, the Nelson County School Board members for all your hard work. We know that you invest your time each month in making sure that the best goes into our school, and all schools in the district. So from the students, parents, and staff at New Haven School, thank you.
Investing in the future.
Putting people first.
Allowing students to innovate with Chromebooks.
Helping us reimagine possibilities.
A renewed vision and change.
Taking the best issues for us.
Advocating for our students.
Getting it possible.
Giving your time and talent.
Developing budget and policies.
Your life, green, support.
Your leadership as a united team.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is nice, thank you. Our student showcase tonight is going to feature AP dual credit opportunities at our ATC. And I will tell you guys just really quick, before we play this video, that I got to hang out in the welding department, which is an area of the ATC that I hadn't really spent a whole lot of time. And their energy was contagious, and I'm so excited to share them with you tonight.
As Nelson County Schools reimagine possibilities for students and community, we are focused on creating future-centered pathways. An integral component of these pathways is creating experiences where students receive early post-secondary credit, through general academic and technical dual credit, in addition to work-based learning.
My name is David Tullman, and I'm taking welding to become a former engineer.
I took welding to build a future career for myself, and you can be ready.
The importance of dual credit that we're offering right now at Nelson County ATC is to help get kids to jumpstart on the career of their choice that they're going to begin after they go to high school.
It's one of my main, my career goals that I'm going to, is go to graduate high school, so we're going to go ahead and start from there, and now.
We're creating a desire for continuous learning and growth through CTE dual credit.
Because it would give me like an extra chance to go ahead and get college stuff on, to the first level of life here.
Even if a student chooses to go straight into the workforce, we must provide opportunities for a band certificate and credential. The WorkReady Scholarship also allows for two free career and technical education courses per year.
The welding dual credit coursework is the beginning for Nelson County Schools. As we create future-centered pathways, we are embedding dual credit in a variety of RCT areas. This work challenges us to reimagine our role in creating experiences for our students that will lead to a talented workforce pipeline for Nelson County.
Okay, thank you. Good job.
So as we've been going along over the past six months, each quarter, we have one of our directors lead the quarterly night.
This is what it looks like.
It's how to use your printer for the new setup. That's what I was going to talk about. So this month, we have our workforce development team led by Ms. Laura Arnold, Ms. Amber Godey, and Mr. David Mudd.
Greetings, the workforce development team is excited to have the opportunity tonight to share with you our priorities, and then to talk about what core actions we are going to take in order to achieve these priorities and really improve the community as a whole. So as we think about work-based learning, it goes back to the conversation, you know, right now, we're working off the energy of the Pride Teams and what took place in this room an hour ago, and working off that energy, reminding us that we are in the give business, and really asking our schools, what are we going to do to help uncover the gives of our students? As we think about where we are in our work, it goes back to our timeline, that we are in that period between January and July, where we're still trying to improve and better our connections with our employers. We're also deeply involved in the Pride Team work, thinking about gives that students need to be able to demonstrate as they transition from high school into the world of work and post-secondary. So as we think about this, what are our core priorities, and what do we need to achieve? So we go back to looking at our pride, inspired leaders and learners, and shared leadership. So when we think about pride, and we think about celebrating our students, it's figuring out a way that they can communicate with the world what gifts they have, and what they're able to offer our community and our employers. So that will come through the development of digital portfolios for our students, moving into inspired leaders and learners, thinking about early college and career pathways. So you saw from the video, when we talk about workforce development, and we think about the changing world, we know our students need advanced credentials, they need dual credit opportunities, even if they're directly going into the workforce. That desire to continue to learn and develop, and that will come through the development of these early college and career pathways. And then bringing everyone to the table. So one of our core actions is to create a future-ready alliance team. This team will be made up of regional and local employers, who will help guide and direct the future of our pathways and where we move with those in Nelson County. So what are some core actions when we think about pride? Amber, David, and I are in the process of working with our schools to create World Awaits Nights and Events, where we start the communication piece with our parents around work-based learning, and how this will become a natural part of a student's day, and what will be going on as they prepare to exit high school. Also working on the digital portfolios that we mentioned, and then creating employer network events, where our students lead these events, connect with employers, and share their portfolios. And we really see this as an entry point into the work-based experience for those students. So they'll first connect with employers through different student-led events, they will have their digital portfolio, resumes to share with those employers, and that'll help guide where those students go, their senior year of high school, to work. Also, as we think about leading and learning, it's really diving into what pathways need to be offered, what does the general academic experience look like, along with that career and technical education experience? So one of the pathways that we'll be introducing next year is our engineering pathway. So we're working with Elizabeth Town Community and Technical College to create an early college experience, where students could go an engineering technician route, but then also thinking about what that needs to look like for those individuals who want to go a professional engineering route through a bachelor's program. And shared leadership, constantly about bringing community employers in, helping lead initiatives, and helping create what our future opportunities will look like. One of our goals is that Amber, David, and I, per week, will meet with nine employers per week to share the vision of work-based learning, and to discover what type of a commitment we can get from our employers, whether they want to just do job shadows, or whether they want to do paid experience, or what that might look like for those employers. Timeline, so this piece is really an accountability piece for Amber, David, and me, as we sit at the table. So we've actually determined a timeline for January and April, that's really diving into what are we going to get accomplished? So this is where you'll see, when we talk about work-based learning, those nine employer connections a week. Hosting network and showcase events, so we have created a CTE monthly connect, we have several CTE teachers in the room tonight, we're meeting on a monthly basis. And their, next month when we meet, they're bringing ideas of what a networking event could look like in their pathway and program area, and what employers would be invited to the table to be a part of that. We've already touched a little bit on those college and career pathways, knowing we will be offering engineering, we're revising a nursing pathway that will offer more dual credit opportunities along with that. Communication, we know that communication is an area that we must improve on, and how do we hold one another accountable to ensure we're communicating on a regular basis with employers, to share celebrations, best practices with employer engagement, and then also making asks to our employers through those communications, and then that parent piece of engaging parents into this conversation. When we talk about shared leadership, it's some of the things that will be taking place over the next few months, we're going to be very much focused on what does the profile of the future-ready alliance team look like, and who needs to be at the table for that, in addition to continuing the impossible externship experience, and that's what we will be leading into next on the agenda. I'm going to ask David Mudd to come forward. I say I have the best team to work with in the district, David and Amber are amazing. It seems like due to Amber's previous work, when we go in to connect with employers, they know our district, they know things we've done, and she has been a great leader in that work. And then David's one of the nicest people I have ever met, and he knows everyone, when we go somewhere, I'm usually dragging him out, saying, okay, David, it's time to leave. But David's going to update us on the work with the impossible externship, and then ask some of our teachers who have been involved in this to come forward.
Thank you for your time, words. I'm David Mudd, TNHS workforce leader, just want to thank the Board for all you guys do, and it's really an exciting time to be a member of Nelson County Schools, so thank you all. I know it's a lot of kind of behind-the-scenes work, but we do appreciate it. So just to kind of tell you our growth goal, by the summer of 2023, all Nelson County school teachers will have participate in a teacher externship to collaborate with local industry partners to explore the demands of the current and future workforce. So with that said, we have currently 30 teachers from all 11 Nelson County Schools, we have several here this evening, if you guys do not mind to stand up, and we'd like to just kind of give them a round of applause. This cohort definitely has a pioneering spirit, as we continue on the invaluable journey to connect our leaders and students with real-world examples of current and future careers. We continuously have professional readings and reflections, discussion around the question, what is the purpose of schools, and what are the possibilities when a school and community connect? We have created, the community connects around five high-demand career sectors, manufacturing, logistic, transportation, business, construction, and healthcare services. Our cohort has begun the journey to two of the five Community Connect Days. Our first visit was to Beam Centauri in Claremont, we were able to, through Laura and her connection with Kevin Smith, we've been really able to see parts of Jim Beam that other people have not had that opportunity. So Kevin's been a real champion for our goal of creating community-centered schools, and we appreciate all he has done for us. We were able to visit the Global Innovation Center and the distilling operations to see connections to future opportunities, including future chemists, future food scientists, machinists, engineering, accounting, and marketing, among many others. The first of our, we also visited two local manufacturing companies, NPR and Orbis. These two companies have been extremely generous with their time and talent for Nelson County Schools, as we explore these possibilities for our future work-based learning. Our last stop was to Peterson Farms, there we were able to meet with Bernard Peterson and his crew, and they really opened up a lot of opportunities we hadn't even really thought about. When you think of agriculture, it's really quite a changing field, and the technology that is going to be required is fascinating, and so we really had a really neat visit with them. Last week, we got to visit UPS, we went to UPS Worldport, and learned their incredible college and career opportunities that they have to offer. We're actually meeting with UPS this week, with Barstown Schools, to discuss the possibility of having a bus to take 20 of our students, and so that's really going to open up some opportunities that maybe previously transportation on I-65 is a concern. I mean, as a parent, I'd be really concerned to have my 17, 18-year-old on that, so I think the bus will definitely allow some more opportunities for students. Real quick, just, we have other visits, we're going to Town and Country, West Banko, Heaven Hill, Ran Contracting, Mago, Buzzix, Harmer Memorial, Flage, Signature Healthcare. Amber's, again, we just, the relationship she's built, that it's just been so nice to be able to go into a lot of these places, and they, you know, just immediately have a trust factor, and when we get to talk about what we're doing. They have taken on 12 of our students for M&amp;A certification in the real world on the job, and they are so excited. It is just, as a teacher, that's why we teach, is so we can see those students in those moments, and see those grins, and that, just when you know that you're making people's dreams come true. So it takes everybody, though, it's not just our group, it takes everybody, so we appreciate all that everybody does. Lastly, we're looking forward to the summer, as our impossible externship leaders will work with local business industry leaders to create remarkable lessons, plans, around a process or a problem, to share with their students in the fall. So our local business leaders will not only serve as co-creators, but they'll be an authentic audience as well, as they return in the fall again to our teachers' classrooms, to our leaders. We're extremely excited for this opportunity, we know if we want to, you know, we want to engage the world, to change the world, so the world awaits. Thank you all. So I'd like to introduce, we do have three of our teacher externship cohort leaders, and that is Morgan Mayer, Mr. McClure, Doug McClure, and Randy Jur. So they're going to share their experiences of the impossible externship. Thank you all.
So when I think about the purpose of school, I think about something that Ms. Diane Berry talked about in our Pride Team not an hour ago, and she said that there's power in investing our teachers in these models, and providing examples, and showing them what it even looks like. So we sit around and talk about the six Cs, and what that can look like, but this teacher externship allows us to live the six Cs. We're seeing how people collaborate in the workforce, we're seeing how people communicate in the workforce. So at Jim Beam, we saw collaboration stations, and we know that's important for our kids. At UPS, they kept saying efficiency, 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 so we know we need to teach our kids critical thinking and problem solving. So from a teacher perspective, that's making me even more aware of the need for this for our schools.
My name is Morna Mayer, and I teach first grade. So when it comes to thinking about work, when Mr. Hill, you know, he asked me, he's like, you want to do this? I'm like, well, sure, but what is this due to concern me? The very first stop, when we went to Beam Centauri, they're like, we need people that are willing to learn, willing to grow. Guess what? They start that when they're big. They have to be willing to learn. And each place that we've been to, they continue to say that, we need problem solvers, we need to give our kids creative thinking skills, like we need to build that starting and exposing them to new careers. My kids absolutely love, when I come back from a new place, they're like, Ms. Mayer, what'd you do? What'd you do there? And I take them, and I show them all the videos, I take videos the entire time. Oh, so this is a robot, and guess what? You can have a job, you can go in there, and you can fix that. Guess what? I don't know how to do that. But guess what? You're going to do it one day, I bet you can. So it's been a great opportunity for me, knowing these jobs are right here in our community, and being able to expose my students, like they're first graders, I mean, they don't know what's out in the world for the most part. And so it's being able to expose them, and I think that's where it starts at for the workforce.
I'm Doug McClure, I am the carpentry instructor at Nelson County ATC, and I feel very fortunate, and I am very thankful to be a part of this first teacher externship. It has been a very exciting experience thus far, and I'm excited to see what comes next. You know, being a carpentry instructor, I mean, we're already, my program, I have to be sort of connected to the industry, I have to, otherwise my program's not going to be what it is. I mean, I have contacts with Buzzix, contacts with other local businesses, but getting out there with these other teachers, and, you know, I'm excited for them, because I'm already sort of connected, but I feel like the rest of these teachers need to see this. You know, she's a first grade teacher, I'm at the end of the spectrum here, I teach ninth through 12th graders. So I'm kind of that guy before they go to industry, you know what I'm saying? So, you know, it's nice for them to say, hey, you know, this is, you know, my students are going to end up here someday. You know, like, we went to Beam Centauri, we're walking in a rickhouse, and I'm walking through there going, yep, I had five students last year working for Buzzix, they probably built this darn thing, you know? That's just the way it works. So it's nice seeing, you know, the excitement, and my kids are the same way, I get back to class, and they're like, they know that I've been somewhere, so they want to know about what I've seen, you know, and what, you know, what's out there for them, you know, what's awaiting for them. So, yeah, this is a great opportunity, and like I said, I'm excited to see what comes next, so thank you all.
All right, good afternoon. So I would feel terrible if I didn't, and Laura and David both gave me shout-outs, and I'm like, if you all don't stop doing this. So it's so nice of them to give me shout-outs, I have to give them shout-outs right back. Thank you all for expanding my team from one to three, because it's been incredible. So tonight, I'm going to talk about dual credit, how it's been delivered, and post-secondary credentials are being delivered different ways. So the first person I'm going to recognize tonight is Lauren Sins. Lauren is the dual credit coordinator at Elizabeth Town Community and Technical, so we started this venture with them probably a little over a year, year and a half ago. But since Elizabeth Town has invested in someone like her, and a fabulous someone like her, our student dual credit numbers have increased, and our students have really grasped on to her advising. So she spends a lot of time at our high schools advising our students, she spends a lot of time behind her email emailing our students, so she's in constant communication with our students and with our workforce leaders at the high school. So aside from working with our students constantly, she also works with our adjunct teachers. So she is on the backside, helping our teachers become adjunct with Elizabeth Town, so that the students can get dual credit offered on our site. So English teachers, math teachers, those core content classes, she's behind the scenes working with those teachers, so that they can get those dual credit through Elizabeth Town as well. So thank you, Lauren, for all your work. All right, the second person leading into that is Mr. Dustin Benningfield. Where's Mr. Dustin? I knew I saw him earlier. So shout-out to Mr. Benningfield, he was the first teacher at the ATC in our region to become an adjunct teacher with Elizabeth Town. After I started kind of working with Lauren, I sat down, I presented to all the ATC teachers, Mr. Benningfield was the first one that said, Ms. Godey, I'll try this. I said, okay, let's do it. So I sat down with him, and we were going through the guidelines of what he needs to do, and he said, so who am I going to reach out to if I have a question? I said, it's me and you, bud, nobody's ever done this. So just shout-out to him, he did everything he was supposed to do on a time limit, and so our students, for the first time ever this semester, he, I think there was, how many students? 26, 30? Okay, so they are all on their way, all have earned their first dual credit class, it was free through the WorkReady, and so whether they want to get a certificate or an ass-... an associate's degree, he is starting their post-secondary while they're on site. We have three teachers who have jumped on board since he was the pioneer, so we are increasing those numbers a lot. Next, I'm going to introduce two people, our early childhood teacher, Ms. Teresa Henderson, and her lovely student, Ms. Kylie Finwick. So we all love to see students here. So we talk about dual credit being offered multiple ways. Through the early childhood pathway, students have the opportunity to earn what they call a CDA certification. So Kylie is actually in an approved apprenticeship program with Crocus Academy. So not only is she earning a wage, she's gaining experience, and she has earned her CDA. So CDA requires a lot of onsite experience. So when we talk dual credit and tie that into that, so not only does she have that certification, but with CDA through Elizabeth Town, she's automatically got nine college credit hours. We just learned through Murray she could get 15. So by students earning these certifications, it is tying into dual credit too. And it was a lot of work for her to do this, and Ms. Henderson worked really hard with her. So just recognizing Ms. Kylie and Ms. Henderson.
So as you can tell, we've had a busy semester, but we have much work ahead, so I look forward when we come back in April to visit with you and share where we are with our work and what we've accomplished to that point, and where we plan to go forward. We have great students that have many things to offer, and as you can tell, there's a variety of experiences our students have or can have to prepare them for the future and to create a better Nelson County. So thank you all. One thing we do want to do, we want to take a group shot of our teacher or Impossible Externship participants. So do we want to do it right here? So if you all can all come forward in Possible Externship.
Jessica's saying, "Just trying to reach."
Say logistics?
I don't remember what it was.
Wait, wait. I want to say something. I know, it's my turn. Okay? To me, listening to all this, and all the volunteers, all the teachers, all the people that have put in this kind of commitment, to me, it's a great time to be a student in Nelson County School District, as well as a great time to be a teacher or a learner of any type in Nelson County. And I want to thank you on behalf of the board. I want to thank you all for your commitment, and thank you. It's great. Thank you very much.
While there, Ms. Bradley. So at some time, when we maybe have a conversation, those of us that would like to maybe be involved in the externships, honestly, I'm jealous. I'm jealous of what they're seeing within our business community.
Yeah, absolutely. You guys know every day that they're going. But I know Diane did a little bit of collaboration with Laura. Laura's really going to be the conduit to that, so she'll be sending you.
And what you maybe didn't hear, Laura, is I'm jealous. I want to have that same experience, because Jeff and I were just talking about it. It helps us understand better the work that we also need to be doing when we have that opportunity too. For some of us, we may or may not be able to do it, but, I mean, let it go in. I'll drive. I'll bring the water bottles. Tell me whatever you want me to do.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is our Operations Consent Agenda, which involves personal actions, Treasuries Report, Bills and Claims, Monthly Financial Report, a balance sheet, leave of absence, minutes from previous meeting, overnight, or out-of-state trips, and fundraising requests, and these were sent earlier. These were sent earlier, and I need a motion to approve these items, please.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Ms. Breeding made the motion.
Sir.
Seconded by Mr. Jackie. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Next is dedicated to our community. We have the Nelson County School Community Support Foundation update, and that would be Ms. Whitlow.
Hello again. Going to change hats and give you guys a quick update on our Community Support Foundation. For the next few months, I'll be leading the foundation as interim executive director, and just wanted to kind of update you on some changes that are really exciting that have taken place over the last month or so. The first thing, just wanted to update you quickly on the Miraval Endowment. We're excited to explore that very generous gift. We actually have a meeting with her next week, so we'll be able to update you more very soon on that. As you know, I'm sure that we have many memorial scholarships that the foundation holds, and recently, we have entered into a very exciting partnership. I'm going to say that probably 18 more times, because there's lots of exciting things happening, but with Central Kentucky Community Foundation, and our partnership with them is going to allow us to take our scholarships, our memorial scholarships, and put them online. So our students in our district are going to be able to fill out one application and apply for all of our scholarships, which is really exciting, too. Again, there's that word again, because Central Kentucky Community Foundation is also going to help facilitate the reviewing process, and also supporting us in helping get our kids on scholarship central in the first place. So there are so many benefits. We, this partnership is really going to allow us to focus on increasing accessibility for these financial gifts for our students and their future careers. The next thing that I wanted to share with you is, wanted to also kind of publicly thank American Greetings and their very generous donation to our ATC. As they were closing, shout-out to, sorry, Amber, another shout-out to Amber, but she really helped facilitate this conversation with American Greetings, and also Mr. Hall at the ATC was instrumental in that gift as well. It's really going to allow our students more real-world opportunities with some of that machinery from American Greetings. The next thing that I wanted to share with you is, wanted to also kind of publicly thank American Greetings and their very generous donation to our ATC. As they were closing, shout-out to, sorry, Amber, another shout-out to Amber, but she really helped facilitate this conversation with American Greetings, and also Mr. Hall at the ATC was instrumental in that gift as well. It's really going to allow our students more real-world opportunities with some of that machinery from American Greetings. The next thing that I wanted to share with you through the foundation is that during Christmas time, our central office staff wanted to reimagine the traditional gift-giving experience, and we pulled our money together and awarded the foundation $400 to start an Impossible Teacher Grant. So you may have seen some super cute, if I do say so myself, in baseball T-Ragglans, and those Ragglans are part of our strategy through the foundation to be able to sustain that fund over time. So I'm excited to report to you that we submitted our check on December 22nd, and we sold over $3,000 worth of Raglan T-shirts. So the potential for this opportunity to be able to give back into our classrooms and help our teachers really have not only ideas and strategies, but real-life monetary funds to be able to support their quest in our cultural priorities that we have in our district. Last thing, the Community Brew is on Friday at 6:00 a.m., and the foundation is going to be talking about that. Our foundation board members will also be there to talk about how the foundation can support workforce development opportunities. Maybe that wasn't super quick, but I'm really excited, and that's all I have. The fresh coffee. Fresh coffee at 6:00 a.m. and 7:15.
Thank you, thank you. Like I said, it's a great time to be in Nelson County. Next on the agenda is our Board Calendar.
So one of the conditions that we worked under first using our board calendar, just so everyone in the room knows, is it's a living calendar in the sense that we talk about it each month, because we recognize that working sessions aren't always necessary. With that said, my recommendation this week will be to keep the calendar as is for February because we want to move our discussion around salaries and salary schedules up, because we feel like the salary schedule discussion in February will really drive our ability to budget more intentionally and reallocate in March and April. So with that said, there's no request to change anything at this point, though.
Okay. Sounds good. Next is Student and Shareholder Engagement, which is our guest comment. Any person wishing to address the board may do so following these rules. Individuals representing them are limited to three minutes. Individuals representing a group are limited to five. Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address, and if you represent a group, state the name of a group you are representing. Okay? With that being said, do I hear a motion to convene executive session per KRS 61.8101K and KRS 156.5576C for preliminary summative evaluation discussion of the superintendent? I'm out full.
Motion.
Okay, I hear a motion. Was that which one?
A motion, I'll second.
Okay, then. A motion by Mr. Jackie and a second by Mr. Dickerson. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Convene. Okay, I need a motion to go back into regular session.
Motion.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Jackie made a motion. Ms. Di, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. In this, I will go over our evaluation of our superintendent. Number, the first item is strategic leadership. We have rated superintendent exemplary. Number two, instructional leadership. We have rated our superintendent accomplished. Number three, cultural leadership. We have rated our superintendent exemplary. Number four, human resource leadership. We have rated Mr. Bradley accomplished. Number five, managerial leadership. We have rated him accomplished. Collaborative leadership. We have rated him exemplary. And number seven, influential leadership. We have rated our superintendent, Mr. Wes Bradley, accomplished. Do I hear a motion that we accept these, our evaluation, please?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Ms. Breeding made the motion to accept our evaluation of Mr. Bradley. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Dickerson. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Do I hear a motion that we adjourn this meeting?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Jackie. Second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Di. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting adjourned.[1776.73]